Chain, um. Yes, we have all the commissioners here. So at this time, I will call the meeting to order for the February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one Planning Commission Meeting. Welcome, everybody, guests, commissioners, everybody. Um, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda tonight, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you.
We need to make an amendment to the agenda.
Okay, Sheri.
The item missing on tonight's agenda is to approve the last, the January meeting minutes.
No, it's number four.
Is it? Okay, not on the copy I saw then. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, then we're good.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri. So I have Sharon. Sharon making the motion and Sheri adopting it, or stepping in it. Stephanie, are you doing your roll call?
I am.
So Wanda?
Aye.
Sheri?
Hi, Sharon.
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Daryl?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Item three on here is an appointment of a vice chair and chairperson. And if you can bear with me for a moment, um. This might sound self-serving, but with all of the COVID stuff that's been going on, Terri and I have not really been chairpeople. We've been more like, um, wave-at-you people every month. And if no one has a great objection, I would like to put before the commission to allow Terri and I to finish out two thousand and twenty-one as chairperson and co-chairperson. Um, if anybody has objections, please speak up. Otherwise, I'd like to put that proposal before, before you.
No objections from me.
Any objections?
None.
No? Would somebody like to make the motion?
I will make that motion that the current chair and associate chair, whatever they're called, um, co-chair, continue through two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Sheri.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I have a second? Thank you. Stephanie, you're up.
Okay, did we get a second?
I thought we had a second. Jim did.
Yeah, okay. About that. Okay, um, so we have Wanda.
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Daryl?
Aye.
Tom?
Did we lose Tom? We lost Tom for a minute. We'll come back to him if he.
He's trying to solicit ballots.
Thanks, Glenn. All right, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January twenty-sixth meeting. And I know, Sheri, you, we had received an email from you regarding the last meeting. Um, I don't know that it's going to make a difference to amend it unless you want to amend it for your personal reason.
No, no, we don't need to do that because it, it won't change the outcome. So we're good. I just wanted you all to know where I was coming from and didn't want you to think I'd lost my mind.
I didn't notice. I didn't notice. I just figured it was the way we were on these things. Tom's back. Do you want to get his vote?
Yeah, um, they voted on the chair and vice chair. And.
The two currents continuing.
I, I agree. Both of them, uh, I vote for both of them.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, does anybody have any changes, additions, deletions, anything for the January twenty-sixth minutes?
I do.
Okay, Glenn, go for it.
Um. Not sure that, I'm guessing it's each five of six. At the bottom right-hand corner is the numbering we're using. Um, anyway, second paragraph. It concludes with the sentence, "He stated this did not appeal to him." And I'd like to strike that because it's either out of context or um, something, but it doesn't sound right to just, it's just frivolous and doesn't really work with us.
Okay.
That's really.
Oh, I see where it is. Okay. Do we have a motion to strike that?
Do we need one?
I don't think we need, do we need one?
No, not one.
No. All right. I agree. So that will be done. Anybody else have anything else? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will make the motion to approve as amended by Glenn.
Second.
Thank you, Glenn. Stephanie?
All right, we have Wanda.
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Glenn? Jim?
Aye.
Daryl?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item five, which is the final plat for Whispering Aspen Second Edition at two hundred and forty-first and Pierce Street. Um, we way back in, I believe, November, we saw the beginning of this. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Erin.
Yeah, I'll be doing this one.
Oh, Stephanie, I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Yeah, so on November ninth, City Council approved the preliminary plat, uh, with the conditions that city staff comments to be satisfactorily addressed and a financial guarantee. And the amount determined by the city engineer, um, must be established for, for street utilities and grading work prior to the release of the final plat for recording. Attachment three is the approval letter by the city engineer, um, indicating city staff comments have been satisfied. But once the final plat is approved by City Council, the city engineer will submit the amount of the financial guarantee. Um, once staff receives those funds, the MyLarks will be released through filing of a NOKA county. Yesterday, I emailed you each an updated resolution, and I apologize, the one that was in your staff report was actually for classic construction and not for, um, this item. So I did send you that resolution. And at this time, staff is requesting the commission recommend approval of the final plat, known as Whispering Aspen Second Edition, with the conditions set forth in the resolution mailed out yesterday, um, which was stating that the financial guarantee and the amount determined by the city engineer shall be established for street utility and grading work prior to the release of the final plat. And then also that the final plat does need to be filed with an NOKA county.
Thank you, Stephanie. Does anybody have, we discussed this at great length in November, does anybody have anything else they would like to add with the final approval?
Yeah, I do have. I need to try to read Stephanie on this here, but, uh, she was busy or something, but, uh, I got a couple of corrections. One correction anyways, the road that goes into this new cul-de-sac that they want to put there, it's stated that it's thirty feet wide outside a curb to outside a curb. That's not correct. It's twenty-eight foot eight. And back in two thousand and five, we changed our zoning to thirty-one feet. And, uh, so to me, that's kind of an issue on there. It's been approved that it's thirty feet, but it's not. It's only twenty-eight foot eight. So that's kind of a concern because it's so narrow. And then also, I was, I remember at that meeting too, that the snow issue was brought up a couple of times, I believe, one by Tom and Sheri, if I'm right, I, if I'm wrong, I apologize for that. That is a concern of mine also. I've spoken with Nate Ashford about it. And that is a concern of theirs because there's nowhere to push the snow. And, uh, they were talking about it in the middle, but with six houses on this cul-de-sac, I don't know if that's a good idea. I'm not sure of it, but I mean, I think it could be an issue if we gotta get emergency vehicles in there. Hopefully, we'll never have to, but we don't know that. And I don't want the city to be liable for that. So I don't know what's the best route on that for getting the snow out of there. Like I say, the, the houses are really stacked in there and there's really nowhere to put the snow. That's the comments.
So this was, um, discussed in great length at City Council for preliminary plat and then also at Planning Commission. And what came onto that at City Council is that the snow removal, um, when they are plowing it, they will be plowing it into the center of the cul-de-sac like they do the other cul-de-sacs in this development. However, they will be taking the front-end loader since it's already up in that area anyways, and they'll be removing the snow from there. So there isn't going to be any pileup in the center, um, of the cul-de-sac. And that was, again, because fire also had concerns about having it piled up there if emergency vehicles need to get in there. So the snow will be removed again, just like it is in the other cul-de-sacs. And as far as the street being too narrow, um, this was a PUD back in two thousand and four, so, um, the width of the road is what they are. Um, and even moving forward, if they come in with other additions to this, uh, the road will be back sized to is what they are right now.
Yeah, what concerns me is, is, uh, Hokinson, they're the ones that approved this and they claim that the road is thirty feet wide coming into this. It's not, it's only twenty-eight foot eight. So that's not the correct measurement that it is right now. And as of two thousand and five, all of our roads are supposed to be thirty-one feet into it. And this is a new cul-de-sac. So that, that was my concern because it's a lot narrower than what they're claiming it is.
Yeah, by a foot.
For this or?
Correct.
They said.
Yeah, and that I can't comment on. That's something that would be better than Ask the City Engineer.
Okay, because that, like I said, they're, Hokinson's approving this at thirty feet and it's not thirty feet. It's twenty, that's already a four short of what they're claiming it is, and it's two foot four short of what our zoning is.
Yeah, but we can't go off of zoning because this was a planned unit development. So what we need to go off of is what was approved as part of this development.
Right, but we're putting a brand-new cul-de-sac in, so the new zoning should follow.
It won't. Um, the whole area again was, if you look at the agreement, um, that was signed as part of this in two thousand and four, is that standards that were approved at then would be carried through this entire development.
That's not a good thing on my part, but whatever. But the thing is too, is when I have talked to Nate, it's going to cost the city a lot of money, more time and everything else to get the snow out of there. So I mean, is there anything, my question would be, I guess, to the developer, I, I don't think he's around tonight or whatever, but these six houses, is there a way that he could leave possibly one out that we could push snow into? Until, I don't know, how many lots does he have left to develop? You know, Stephanie?
There's quite a few. Yeah, he's gonna have at least
I mean, is that?
One or two other subdivisions in there.
Just, just like to leave one lot out where we could plow snow and it wouldn't be such a burden on all of us, the city? Is that something we could suggest?
Yeah, you suggest, you could suggest it, yeah, plan it, but City Council did approve the preliminary plat as best. So what they're going off of is what City Council approved. But you could make a recommendation of that.
What do I do to that with? Just through you or what?
Yeah, yeah, and yeah, what we'll do is, um, report to City Council who would put it in there.
Commissioners too, if they have any, anything, or what they're thinking. Or am I the only ones?
I have a comment to that. I mean, Jim, I agree with what you're saying because back when we first discussed this, my big question was that cul-de-sac and the snow in the middle and emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
And the same discussion happened then as is happening now, that the, the city will be required to go in and remove that pile of snow. Well, if they can't remove it for two days, what happens? And at that time, I think we had discussion about recommending that the City Council review that also. So if they did and went ahead and approved it, that's out of our hands, but at least it's on record that we discussed it and it was our concern.
Right.
That's always a concern of mine on cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, I agree.
And it was on record and we did discuss it, like I said, we discussed this at great length in November and it was put down and City Council has had it before them and they have discussed it. And whatever recommendations were made at that time have been satisfied. So now it's back to us for approval for the final plat. Um, as far as the road, as far as the roads go, Jim, that was part of the two thousand and four agreement and our zoning changed in oh-five. So this is, I guess, what you would call grandfathered in. Um, there's nothing we can do about that. And where are you seeing the thirty feet at?
Thirty feet on the, uh, on the paperwork, new cul-de-sac. But it's hard to read it because it's small, but it's listed thirty feet wide outside of the curb.
Yeah. And Commissioner, uh, Smith went over just measured it.
Yeah.
And so he came out with, uh, twenty-eight.
Okay.
My concern is, uh, Suzanne still on there with us?
I am here.
Suzanne, did you remember, hear anything about this? Uh, no issue at this?
I don't remember us discussing the snow issue, but I do remember bringing up the footage. And I was under the assumption that when it came back to the Planning Commission, you guys were going to address that. So I'm, I was hoping it would be addressed and fixed before it came back to City Council.
That what would be?
What it would, yeah.
The issue about the width of the roads. I brought it up at the City Council meeting and they said, well, this is just a preliminary. It will be taken care of at the Planning Commission. But now you're saying that it's, um, grandfathered in. However, there's a lot of ordinances out there that they don't allow to be grandfathered in. So people have been fined and everything for things that they had placed on their property before the ordinances came into effect. And they're having to fix them. So I'm kind of confused at the doubles. I don't want to really say it's a double standard, but you know, they hold residents to one standard and developers to another, and that's not right either.
So, um, the way that this works is this was called a planned unit development, which was approved in two thousand and four. And the standards were put in place at that time back in two thousand and four. Uh, we have an agreement that was signed by the city and then also by the developer stating that any subdivisions of this or any additions moving forward will be able to meet those standards that were approved back in two thousand and four. So any ordinance that is approved afterwards, it doesn't matter. Um, what had happened is that there was an agreement back in two thousand and four with this development. Um, and it's not even just this one. It's any planned unit development. When there's a planned unit development, a lot of times those don't meet the ordinance. Um, a planned unit is development, planned unit development is when there's, there's flexibility and standards, um, that are approved by the City Council, and that's what this one is. And so the, so the only reason why this one has different regulations than, you know, some of the other developments out there is because of what the developer and City Council in two thousand and four, um, agreed to. And so this plat right here in front of you is following the regulations that were put in place for this individual development.
When those.
Also, to go back to the cul-de-sac discussion, um, yes, that was discussed at City Council and it was also, um, discussed that this cul-de-sac meets the city requirements for cul-de-sacs.
When this was approved as a PUD, were there six lots in the plat?
Um.
Yes, yes, there were.
Yes.
No.
It's approved as a PUD and the preliminary plat is attached to the developer's agreement. There are six lots. They're tuned almost exactly. Identified.
Right, and there was also a ghost plat that was approved, um, and that was given to you as part of your preliminary plat packet. So this, this, um, second edition complies with that ghost plat that was approved back in two thousand and four.
I, I, I'd like to add one thing about the snow removal issue. It, it is a concern, but it's, uh, it's not uncommon. Uh, as far as pushing snow into a vacant lot, that's not really practical either because after you push snow in there for a couple of times, you've got to bring the front-end loader up to remove it because you can't get the trucks back in there. It starts piling up too high. Starts getting too slick, too deep. So, uh, they have talked to both Nate and the fire chiefs. They don't seem to think this is going to be a huge problem. Uh, the fire chief says as long as he's got room to get his trucks around there, the cul-de-sac's big enough. There's no issue on their part. Uh, there's a couple of other cul-de-sacs in the city where we're doing this the same way. Uh, so, uh, I don't think the snow thing is, 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 is big an issue as it may seem on the surface, and we've got plans and we're, we'll be able to handle that.
Yeah, but it's the city's cost. It costs the city extra to have the mess wrong with this. I mean, we're, we're spending taxpayers' dollar on stuff like this so a developer can add more houses and more money in his pocket. How do we justify that to the residents when it costs us more money?
Well, it's, this is what's approved, Jim. We, uh, already approved, this is approved back in two thousand and four. This is the finalization of it. Uh, as far as that, we have to bring loaders, graders, everything up to clean up other snowplow messes throughout the city. Uh, the first snow plowing done on the first day of the snowfall is what people think about, but then usually on any kind of significant snowfall, we're out there the day after, sometimes even two days after cleaning up. So I don't think this would be any extra, huge extra cost, if any, in relation to what we have to do within the subdivision streets as they now do.
Thank you, everybody. Does anybody else have any comments on this? Is someone ready to make a motion to approve the final plat for Whispering Aspen Second Edition? All right, I'll make the motion to approve the final plat for Whispering Aspen Second Edition, two hundred and forty-first Avenue and Pierce Street, as presented, along with the pending financial piece of, of the project.
I will say.
Thank you.
Was that Sharon?
Yes. Stephanie?
Okay, Wanda?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Jim?
No.
Daryl?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Uh, this will be heard at the March eighth City Council meeting.
All right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the preliminary plat for Classic Commercial Park, the Fourth Edition at one hundred and eighty-seventh and Ulyssy, Ulysses. Whoever, Stephanie, Erin, whoever's up.
So again, tonight is the public hearing for the preliminary plat. Um, so a little bit of a background, in two thousand and fourteen, the council approved the plat for Classic Commercial Park Third Edition. Uh, the plat is, I believe it's, I think it's shown there for you guys. Um, the plat consists of one buildable lot and one outlot. City code states that the issuance of a building permit is not allowed on outlots, um, unless the City Council approves it. So there is an interested business that would like to purchase and build on the outlot. And since the lot is legally described as an outlot, the property owner would like to replat the property for building purpose. So there will be no changes to the lot size or anything. The only change, uh, will be the legal description from Outlot A, Classic Commercial Park Third Edition, um, to Lot One, Block One, Classic Commercial Park Fourth Edition. So at the time of the Classic Commercial Park Third Edition was planted, um, park dedication fees were collected for the one lot that's buildable for Lot One, Block One, and not for Outlot A. Um, park dedication fees determined by five percent of the market value of the undeveloped land, not to exceed two thousand dollars per acre. So staff is working with the property owner to determine the amounts required for the park dedication fees, uh, which will need to be paid prior to the release of the final plat, um, be filed with the NOKA county. So at this time, staff's requesting the commission to hold the public hearing, discuss and, uh, recommend approval of the preliminary plat, known as Classic Commercial Park Fourth Edition, with the conditions set forth in the previous resolution. And I know, uh, Mr. Kirk Strandlin, um, the developer, landowner, is on the line if you have any questions or comments specifically.
Thank you, Stephanie. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing regarding Classic Commercial Park Fourth Edition at one hundred and eighty-seventh Avenue and Ulysses Street. Is there anyone on who would like to speak to this? All right. Hearing none. At this time, I will close the public hearing. All right, now. Is there anybody on the Planning Commission who has any comments? Items they'd like, questions, discussions?
I have a question. When this, when a plat, when a development comes in for plotting and something is designated as an outlot, is that because it's not taxed? What is the reason why this can all be plotted as lots in the first place?
Yeah, that's a good question, Glenn. I'm not sure if an outlot is taxed differently than the regular lot. Um, so I can find out that information and get back to you on it.
Another possible reason might be to leave it open to how they want to break it in the future before plating it.
That's what I understood was that gives them greater flexibility on if somebody wants Lot A, B, and C, they can plot it as one lot eventually. That's my understanding of it.
Yeah.
That was mine also.
Yep, it is. I mean, it is a five-acre parcel and I'm, I'm sure in the past, um, there was probably opportunities to break it up into two different lots. And they didn't have a buyer at that time, so they kept it as an outlot, a five-acre outlot.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions or? All right, is we need to approve the preliminary plat now, right, Stephanie?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Classic Commercial Park Fourth Edition with the specifications?
I'll make it approved as stated with specifications.
I'll second. Oh.
Sheri, everybody. Okay, um, then we have Wanda.
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Glenn? Jim?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Daryl?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. It will be heard at the March eighth City Council meeting.
Okay, this is another one of those um, interesting ones where we have both the preliminary plat and the final plat at the same meeting. Um, so we'll move forward. Um, so we'll move forward with discussion on the final plat. And once again, I don't know that anybody does, but I have a question. In the preliminary plat, it was stated that the parks' fees would be decided before the final plat is approved? Is that correct, Stephanie? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, so before we go to city council meeting on March eighth, we'll have the fee for them.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on this? Does someone want to make the motion to approve the final plat for Classic Commercial Park Fourth Edition?
This is Sharon. Go ahead.
Your turn.
Okay, how about Sharon makes the motion? And Glenn seconds it, how about that?
That sounds great.
So I'll make the motion to recommend approval of final plat.
Okay, so Wanda?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Daryl?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, and again, March eighth. The next item on the agenda is the big one, um, and we have lots of detail that came to us, um, at various different times, and I know it was a lot of work for the city to pull this all together. But this will be the public hearing for the city code appendix A, the zoning map amendment, and the R three development standards, um, for the two thousand forty comp plan. Stephanie?
Um, Erin will be presenting the plan.
Okay.
Okay, so staff is requesting that the planning commission hold a public hearing and consider the recommendation for the revisions of the zoning ordinance and zoning map to city council. Last week, one thousand one hundred and thirty-five public hearing notices were sent to residents of East Bethel for the rezoning of properties, uh, in, like, in conjunction with the approval of the two thousand forty comp plan. Uh, this is a required step to be taken after the approval of the comp plan. Uh, since the notices were sent out, I have personally spoken with, this is fifty-two, by the end of today, it ended up being fifty-eight property owners, seeking clarification of what this means in regards to their property. After discussing the changes with them, they all expressed that they were in favor of the zoning changes as it pertained to their personal lots. Uh, they were given the opportunity to come and speak tonight. Uh, many of the residents did decline the offer and were informed that they could speak or that they could watch the meeting on YouTube tonight or through Channel Ten without joining the WebEx meeting. So after conversations with city councils noted that the Coon Lake properties may be better suited to a zoning district separate from R three zoning, the additional standards are being proposed for the creation of a Coon Lake residential district that had been sent to the planning commissioners. And it was published on the city website later today, uh, early, it was about three o'clock. So this is a different version of the planning commission packet than was published on Friday. So here is a map of the Coon Lake land use as was approved in the two thousand forty comp plan. Just kind of want to show this so that you guys have an idea of what we're talking about. During the two thousand forty comp plan discussions, it was acknowledged that there was significant non-conformity issues and that present zoning requirements were hindering property owners. Initially, this was proposed as an R three zoning district. However, during conversations with residents and city council members, it was noted that the Coon Lake area may be better suited to have a separate zoning district to address the unique challenges specific to this area. This will reduce the number of variance requests required for property owners to add decks and additions to residential structures, as well as acknowledging the septic challenges in this area. The maps shown in the slide are properties within the Coon Lake land use in the two thousand forty comp plan. However, the lots that are larger, as shown in red here, do not need the reduction of setbacks as proposed for this CLR zoning. The staff is proposing that these lots remain R one. So here are, on the left, you can see the proposed zoning changes. It, it will be slightly different, but as you can see around Coon Lake, it's still marked as R three, but that will be changed into a Coon Lake zoning. Uh, the removal of the southern portion of the city from rural center to diversified rural community designation in the City of East Bethel Comprehensive Plan update resulted in the land use change from low to medium density residential land use to the rural residential land use of many of the affected properties, from R one to proposed RR. With the creation of Coon Lake land use designation, it was determined to be reasonable to establish a Coon Lake residential or CLR district to accommodate the challenges unique to the small lot sizes, including those posed by aging septic system. There are additional areas of concern for future, future septic challenges that have been identified in the DeGardner's Ned Lake Second Edition subdivision, as well as the Sunny View Edition subdivision, resulting in these properties being added to an R three zoning district. The city center district has been changed to mixed use and expanded to accommodate future PUDs along the southeastern Highway sixty-five corridor. The East Bethel Village Apartments property was rezoned MXU along with two properties to the west of Highway sixty-five and Two Hundred and Forty-First Avenue. The mixed use district leaves the previously designated city center zoning designation largely unchanged. With the exception of the removal of the development standards requiring a minimum of twenty acre project size, as this could hinder future development. The MXU requires a PUD for all future development. And then section fifty-one, the proposed small lot, single family residential, or R three district, is very similar to the R one district. The only differences are the seven foot side and rear setback and the density requirements, which have changed from a minimum of ten acres to a minimum of two acres without cities or groundwater. These are the same setbacks approved in the Viking Preserve and Whispering Aspen PUDs. This zoning designation will help the city recognize septic and well challenges. And while the city is still required by the MPCA to grant variances for holding tanks and setback reduction of more than fifty percent, it will be easier to address through the establishment of precedence in the matter of septic system. So the R three proposed areas show the Sunny View and DeGardner Ned Lakes Edition. The properties within these subdivisions are on average point four or five acres, with a large percentage of the lots being inhibited by what is designated as a highly susceptible wetland, which puts septic and minimum building setbacks from the delineated wetland edge at fifty feet. The city is seeing a significant number of these properties being identified as having failing septic systems through inspections by licensed septic inspectors. Both of these subdivisions were approved in nineteen sixty-four and nineteen seventy-three respectively, and many of the aging septic systems are approximately fifty years old. They're highly anticipated by staff to begin having similar numbers of failing septic systems, requiring setback or holding tank variances to be approved by city council, as in the Coon Lake beach area. The rezoning of these lots to R three would allow for more expeditious remedies for these property owners through lessening of setback requirements to lower the number of setback, septic setback variance requests. Uh, as you can see in this aerial view, it kind of shows that the side yard setbacks are very minimal in this specific subdivision. It also has a very high water table here, but when these subdivisions were established, it was, it preceded or predated the septic requirements of having a secondary drain field location. As you can see, if a new location were to be needed for some of these drain fields, it, it's unlikely that one will be found. Many of the existing drain fields will likely need to be removed and the sand replaced, and then the septic system placed in the exact same location, which can pose uh, some pretty significant challenges to the property owners. So then, the next area is the Viking Preserve subdivision. This property was developed as a PUD with similar lot standards as the proposed R three. The approved setbacks for this PUD are twenty-five feet for the front and rear yard and seven feet from the property line, side property line. The rear yard, yard side, the rear yard setback is unaffected though because all of the properties in this subdivision either have a drainage and utility easement at the rear lot line or the rear lot line meets up with a street, so they would still be required to have twenty-five feet of setback there. Uh, the subdivision was never rezoned, and as a result, there are split zoning in the subdivision as well as unaffected. So there are fifteen individual lots that are split zoned R one and R two, and additional four lots being split zoned as R two and City Center. This has been a challenge with title companies inquiring with the city for potential homeowners in this subdivision, and this potentially caused buyers to need to choose a different lot within the subdivision that could cause future financing issues for individuals looking to purchase these lots. Staff is recommending the rezoning of these properties to R three small lot residential. The next subdivisions are Pine Grove Estates and Nordina Estates, which are, as you can see, by eight, One Hundred and Eighty-third Avenue at the bottom of the zoning map. These properties were initially proposed to be rezoned to R three small lot residential. However, upon closer review of these subdivisions, staff is recommending no rezoning of these properties, maintaining the presence of R one single family residential zoning. Staff requests the planning commission to hold a public hearing for the proposed amendments to the zoning map and zoning code and make a recommendation to city council on the proposed amendment for the creation of the Coon Lake residential zoning district, the creation of the small lot, single family residential zoning district, the amendment of the city center zoning district to mixed use zoning district, and to amend the proposed zoning map to exclude the following subdivisions and properties. Pine Grove Estates, Nordina Estates, Katie's Way, Peterson Ridge, Tri Oak Estates, Ken and Barb's Edition, Rathnson Manor, Sunny Meadows, and the unfatted lots outlined in Attachment Nine. This would mean that all of the properties that are located within those subdivisions will remain unchanged. Wanda, you're still muted.
I have muted, Wanda.
Thank you, um, and thank you, Erin. For simplicity's sake, what I'd like to propose, um, is we'll go through these one at a time. Let's start with the Coon Lake, and I will ask, I'll open the public hearing for the entire proposal, but let's talk on them one at a time. So we'll take, if there's anybody out there who would like to speak on the Coon Lake residential properties, I will allow them to speak. And if you are speaking, we'll need your name and your address. And then if you can keep your comments brief, I know there's a, quite a few people online, keep your comments brief to about three minutes, um, we can get through everybody who would like to speak tonight. So at this moment, I will open the public hearing for the zoning text amendment and zoning map amendments. At this time, we'll speak to the Coon Lake residential. Is there anybody out there who would like to address this? All right. Hearing no one that would like to speak to the Coon Lake residential, let's move on to the zoning map amendment. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak to the zoning map amendment?
I would.
And who is this, Suzanne?
Nope, this is Jody Bratsch.
Okay, and your address, Jody?
One nine two six five Lever Street Northeast.
All right, thank you. And you have the floor.
Could we get the spelling of your last name too, Jody?
B R A T S C H.
Thank you.
No, I live in between in Eastern Boulevard and, um, the Katie Way, or what is it, Katie's Way Development? And that Katie's Way Development, they have bigger lots. I don't, I have like one point three acres, and my neighbors have like half a acre. So I'm under the impression that I'm going to stay the same. But I really kind of think that I should be rezoned because our lots aren't as big as the others around us.
Jody, your property will be R three. Uh, this map, the lines are a bit thicker. Um, so the Katie's Way subdivision was removed, but all of the lots to the east of there will be R three. So you would, or not R three, sorry, the Coon Lake residential. So you would meet the, like, your lot would be a Coon Lake residentially zoned property.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the zoning map amendments? All right, hearing none, I'll move on to the mixed use district, which basically it just changes the twenty acres. Is there anybody who would like to speak to that? All right, hearing no one. I will move to the small lot, single family residential, now known as R three. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak to that? All right, I hear no one for the public hearing, no one else. So at this time, I will close the public hearing. Um, now let's do the same thing, if it's all right with everybody. Let's do the same thing for our commission members. We'll go back and start with the Coon Lake residential. Commission members, do any, does anybody have any questions, comments, need clarification? Um, this was discussed way back when, when we originally started talking about the two thousand forty uh, comp plan. So it's not unfamiliar, but there are some new members since then.
Wanda?
Sure.
Um, I actually spoke to a couple of Coon Lake residents on Friday before seeing the original council packet or commission packet that came out. And I just want to say that staff did an awesome job on this whole thing because not only did they answer everybody's questions between when our packet came out and this hit the website and all the updates today, that was amazing. Thank you, guys.
I agree. It was amazing and it was thorough, comprehensive and thorough.
Very thorough, um, yeah. And, and it, you know, it was kind of confusing getting all these different emails and information, but then when I heard from the folks I had spoke to and they said, we totally understand what's going on, we get it, we're, we have no questions, and obviously they're not here tonight commenting. Awesome job.
Anybody else on commission member want to speak to Coon Lake?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Sure, Sharon.
Are there many lots that are not built on in that, in the CLR area?
Um, the, the majority of the lots that are not developed are on that southern leg on the south side of the lake um, that are like just up against the lake, but not quite in that Coon Lake Beach neighborhood. A lot of that is owned by the state. Um, but there are a few houses down there, it is a bit more remote. Uh, I don't know that there are many other areas in the Coon Lake Beach area that are not built on other than the handful of spots that have been combined within the Coon Lake Beach neighborhood.
Okay, well, you know, I, I totally understand and agree that we're rezoning to kind of make this fit the situation, but I don't know if, if it's a great idea to open it up to areas, if there's a lot of areas that are undeveloped with the new zoning. That's just my comment.
Well, I understood this just to be Coon Lake, the CLR, just to be Coon Lake. Mainly, we did, I thought mainly we did this because we were discussing all the septic tanks that were coming up and trying to make that work at the time. Is that correct, Erin?
Yeah, the majority of this is to give the building department the ability to address like septic setbacks without needing to bring every single one to council. If there are any that are close to the lot line than the seven feet, then that will need to be addressed. But other than that, so we're fi, we've been finding that the majority of variance requests in Coon Lake Beach are for setbacks, either for septic systems or for decks. So that's been our big area of concern in this area, like in this particular part of the city. And we wanted to be able, like I know that council has been very open about wanting to be able to work with the residents a bit better to make it easier.
Thank you, Erin. Anybody else have any comments on Coon Lake?
So mainly, this R3 and well issue, correct? On the Coon Lake residential area?
Jim, you broke up. Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, like, okay, the CLR, that's mainly for septic and wells? Is that our issue that's mainly on that? Because of?
So it's septic and then, I mean, there are additions and like decks that we get applications for pretty frequently. This is, it's allowing them an extra two feet before they would need to apply for other areas, and it doesn't affect the setbacks towards the lake.
Okay, it's just the area around, the old area? Okay.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else before we move on?
This is Suzanne Erkel. I do have a question. Somebody needs to mute because there's a lot of feedback. My question is, did any of this cause any consequences to any residents? Because I, I read the positives, which I love, but are there any cons, possible consequences that haven't been considered? That's my only concern.
So staff had originally created, like, we had looked at a lot of this with the western portion, as you can see on these two maps, the right one is the existing and the left one is the new one. So the, the give and take is that Coon Lake Beach were able to kind of reduce those setbacks. But on the western portion, you can see that there are a significant portion of lots that are going from an R1 zoning to rural residential, which means that their side yard setbacks are, instead of ten feet, going to be twenty-five. Fortunately, this southern portion of the city is very wet, so a lot of those property owners aren't actually adversely affected because they would have to be away from those wetlands anyways. But that is a, a portion of what we are gonna see because that is a, a fifteen-foot increase in their side yard setback. But the, they also kind of get more in return because those lots are larger. So instead of being required to have a ten-acre minimum for the lot sizes, they'll be able to subdivide at a minimum lot size of two acres with an average of two and a half. So they're still kind of gaining abilities with their lots that they didn't have otherwise as well.
Okay, do they, is that setback requirement absolutely one hundred percent mandatory? That it has to be twenty-five feet? I mean, can it go a little bit less, or is that set in stone?
That's what the rural residential zoning district is currently set at. If council wanted to discuss changing those setbacks, or possibly have, I mean, there could be consideration for not rezoning those properties and leaving them as R1, but with the lot sizes, they do fit with that land use of rural residential, and that's why it was changed within the comp plan as well.
Thank you, Erin, I appreciate it.
All right, anybody else? Okay, I'm going to move on to small lot, single-family residential, R3. Does anybody have any comments, concerns, questions on this? And I guess we could start with the um, DeGardner's Ned Lake and Sunny View. Does anybody have any comments or questions on those? Wow, those septic tanks are holding up good if they're fifty years old. Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns on Viking Preserve?
I just have a question. Understand what preserve is added to this because of city sewer? What's the issue with that, yes?
So Jim, you're asking why there's an issue with Viking Preserve, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, they're twenty, and they all seem like they're good sized lots.
Well, it's the zoning, it's the way they're zoned. Nineteen lots are zoned one way, four lots are zoned the other. They're proposing to make them all zone the same way so that lenders and tax people and et cetera, et cetera, don't have a problem with the zoning. Is that correct, Erin?
Yes, and in addition, that the R3 zoning doesn't require that they don't have city sewer and water. We do have development standards in all of our zoning districts for when's, when the lots acquire sewer and water. So staff was request, or was proposing to rezone this as the R3 because it already has the same setback requirement, with the exception of the front property line, which was established in the PUD. So as it was already going to be rezoned, it, it seemed to be a better fit for these specific lots than if we were to go with R1 or R2.
So, so then Viking Preserve already has the seven-foot side space already?
That is correct.
And it's still twenty-five feet in the back and in the front?
Yes, but the twenty-five-foot rear yard setback is not relevant on any of the lots as they either, the rear line is on a ci, city street, or has a drainage and utility easement in the rear.
Okay, is that's, is that kind of like where the first ones are, where they kind of butt up to twenty-two? Is that where you're talking on those ones?
Yeah, there, there are lots that have, where the rear lot line is adjacent to Viking.
Okay.
But then there's also the three lots off of Taylor Street on the east side. You can see the rear lot line is on one hundred and ninety-third.
Okay.
So they also have to remain twenty-five feet from one hundred and ninety-third on the rear yard.
Rear setback, okay.
Yeah, so it's not gonna change anything for their setback.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else comments on Viking Preserve? We're not gonna change anything on Pine Grove or Nordean. So does anybody have any comments on this whole proposal, the changes, questions? Because it all comes up in one motion. All right, um, will somebody make a motion?
Real quick, this is Shelley Beck.
Yes, Shelley.
Can I ask a real quick question?
Go ahead.
What is the difference between rural residential and R1?
Erin?
So initially, when I, when I first started with the city and was working on learning the differences between our zoning code and like how that pertained to our comp plan, initially, R1 was established because that was the parts of the city that were planned to have sewer and water. And so we're kind of still sticking with that in removing the southern portion, because that southern portion is not planned on having sewer and water through the 2040 comp plan. Um, leaving some of those subdivisions zoned R1 so that their setbacks don't change, so that we're not imposing any differences on them. Like for building and adding septic systems, that's kind of the intention. But R1 is supposed to be more of a higher-density residential. And so then the rural residential is more of, like, the city has shown that it's very important to them to maintain the rural feel. So everything outside of, I believe it's three quarters of a mile of Highway sixty-five is intended to kind of keep that more green space and a more rural feel with allowing more agricultural uses and, you know, farm animals, that type thing.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, butted in.
Oh, no worries.
That's okay, Shelley. You're gonna either get the answer here, you'll get the answer on March eighth.
Right.
So, all right, is somebody ready to make a motion to this city code appendix A zoning map amendment and R3 development standards?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Darrell. Do I have a second? Tom, second?
Okay. Okay, um, Wanda?
I?
Sherry?
Hi.
Sharon?
Hi.
Glenn?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Darrell?
Hi.
Tom. And this will be heard at the March eighth city council meeting as well.
Thanks again for all your work, guys. I mean, this was amazing, amazing task to get this information out in the time you did.
Very, very, very good.
I'm totally impressed.
All right, item nine on our agenda is updates. Hmm, Suzanne, do you have some updates for us?
Oh, sure, I can fill you in on what's been going on in the city. We did a memo of a memorandum of agreement for the Bethel Park, AKA the Haunted Trails, AKA the Bethel Trails. They keep naming it, and I believe that it's not complete because they came back with some variations to what we agreed on, so we have to discuss it some more. Uh, but they do own around eighty acres of East Bethel property, and they've ma, are doing, they were doing things without our approval. The East Bethel Village apartment, um, there are some disagreements on the parking lot lights, and we're not giving them a permit for the Phase Two until their parking lot lights are installed. We sold a surplus property sign. There's a human resources issue that we are, um, the city is starting a personnel committee. Well, that's gonna be discussed at the future meetings. Um, the code enforcement issues, we, on, we discussed on some businesses on Highway sixty-five, two hundred and twenty-first, Sims Road, and on Viking Boulevard. The city packet delivery and open forum si, um, signup changes, so people can sign up to participate in the open forum up to ten AM on Mondays, and the packets are gonna be ready a little bit earlier for us. We did the Highway sixty-five and Con, discussed the Highway sixty-five and Condit, RCI. There's gonna be some road closures coming up this spring and summer on Condit for sure. The east side will be closed for a while, then the west side will be closed for a while. But that should be going in the summer. The variance request on two hundred and eighteenth detached accessory that passed, the Baltimore Street, there was a mo, motion made to deny it, which failed, however, this was the driveway thing. However, there was a waiver for reapplication fee that passed and a sixty-day extension that passed. So you guys will have to go look at those minutes because that was kind of a confusing issue. But, um, that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, any questions for Suzanne? None? Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you all. It was a very informant, informative meeting tonight, I enjoyed it.
Stephanie, do you have any updates for us?
I have no update.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Davis, if you're still on, do you have anything for us?
No, I'm, very good meeting, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. I know there was a lot tonight and a lot to look at, and it kept coming, and I really appreciate everybody's input. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Hold it.
Okay, Glenn, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, since, uh, if Jack is still here, that the Booster Park, the pet, the, the pond in the middle of Booster Park is getting ravaged.
The beavers!
By beavers, and it seems like those trees should be wrapped before we lose everything on the shore there. Be with mesh or something to keep them from being chewed completely gone.
It's funny you brought that up, Glenn, because I walked my dog there today, and I sent Nate a quick email and said, "Are we going to eradicate the beavers before the beavers eradicate all the trees on the lake?" And I hadn't heard back yet, but yes, they are taking everything down there. I think Jack's gone.
Yeah, I, I will bring that up to Jack and Nate tomorrow.
But thank you, Stephanie. Good call, Glenn. Anybody else have any last minute things?
I just have a question.
Sure, Jim.
Do we have any idea when we can do in-person meetings again?
Hey, I heard a rumor that we might be working towards sometime in April, and I know Suzanne brought it up at the last work meeting and kind of got pushed down, but I heard a rumor that we might be looking at April. That's a rumor, that's hoping.
Keep the rumor. That's it.
All right. Amendment or a motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Seconds.
Everybody, everybody's seconds.
How about we'll pick Sherry? Um, so Wanda?
I?
Sherry?
Hi.
Sharon?
Hi.
Glenn?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Darrell?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
With that, I thank everybody. I thank you for your uh, loyalty or respect and all of your hard work on this. And here we go, 2021. Thank you, everybody. Bye.